Okay, if I can get everybody's attention please. We're going to call this work session to order. This is Monday, May 9, 2016. At 4:30 PM, we're in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. We'll be rolling right downhill tonight, but we're going to move a couple of things up for those of you that are following. So first, tonight, we'll be covering consideration of a development agreement for Apollo School. We have a presentation tonight?
Actually, Pete Swiger with Miller Valentine is currently meeting with Saunders &amp; Heitz down in my office. They're just wrapping up. So he's meeting with that neighborhood association. Thought he'd be up in a few minutes, but...
Okay, we'll just bypass him for now, and we'll come back to him. How about that? And we'll start with number 12. It's a resolution approving agreement with Police Facility Design Group, PA, for the Burlington Police Facility renovation. And Police Chief Beard, are you going to start us off with that?
Yeah, it's very briefly kind of what we wanted to put together tonight was just maybe a short question-to-answer session of maybe anything you had, any questions you'd have for the architect. Mr. Estes has been willing to drive up here from Kansas City this afternoon to spend some time with us if you have any questions about the process or kind of where we're at. I mean, the building's been purchased, as you know, and so now our next phase of this will be design and concept. And Mr. Estes has helped us throughout this process, beginning in 2009, with the needs assessments from the building, and he's been beside us all the way. So he's very familiar with the project and with the bank, and he's presented an agreement to the city of Burlington to be the architect for the project from beginning date to completion, and has also been willing to help us with the process to select a construction manager. We've decided to go with that process, and he's been very instrumental as well in helping us navigate our way through that request for qualifications. So with that said, does anybody have any questions? I know this agreement is a very in-depth document, but it's a standard document put out by AIA. I mean, any document you would see from any architect that would involve a construction manager to assist in a project, you would see this exact same document. I mean, it's been tried and true in the courts all over the countryside, so, I mean, we entrust, obviously, in his ability to put this document together, and it is a very standard boilerplate document. But if there's any questions in there that you have now or you have before next Monday night, feel free to ask. One thing I already addressed with James was it talks about in here the fee to construct or to help us design the firing range. Well, you can scratch that. We already know that we can't afford a firing range, and Mr. Estes is well aware of that. Those extras in there, if you will, the only way he could proceed with that would be with our permission. So rather than just remove it from the document, he would have to have our permission to proceed with an extra like that. So, and like I said, I'm confident we don't have the money, and unless somebody comes forward with a very large private donation, we're not going to have the money to continue with that part of the project. So we're all very well aware of that. So with that said, it is, if you look in here at his fee or the fee that he's talking about charging, it is the exact number that he gave us one year ago to do the architect fees for the building. So I thought that was more than fair of him to do that. Here we are, 16 months later, things go up. Well, he hasn't had any, he didn't put any increases in there at all, so... Is there anything you want to add, Jane?
Only any questions?
Can I have, yeah, can we have you come up, please, in a way everybody can hear you?
James Estes with Police Facility Design Group. As the chief said, we're out of Kansas City. One thing I'll point out, we've been Wilson-Estes Police Architects throughout most of this project. We've just recently gone through a renaming of the company.
Okay.
Same company. This is based on the study that was initially conducted with the city and county law enforcement. We went back, we looked at alternatives for police-only, then we've looked at the bank facility. This contract is really based on some of the preliminary work we did in looking at the bank, I think going all the way back to 2009 or 10 initially. We put together some costs on there, and obviously, everybody was looking at the new costs we developed in the study and recognizing that these are expensive buildings and looking at ways to save quite a bit of money. So even as we did the initial look on the bank facility, we were looking at doing a good police facility, but one that we were trying to do everything we could to limit the budget on the project. For example, we've created some constraints in the design of the project in that our intent is to reuse stairwells and reuse restrooms wherever we can. Those were some of the ways we kept our costs down. That is still our intent to move forward along that line. So this scope of services is a comprehensive scope of service to get you from reviewing the work that we did several years ago, the design work on the project, the construction documents that a contractor can bid the building from, and acting as your representative, your liaison, looking at your interests to make sure the contractor constructs the building in accordance with the plans that we come up with as we work through with the department on this. It's, in essence, it's turnkey from the standpoint of the architectural services work. It is also based on a construction administration contract using construction management as the delivery method, which is where the contractor is kind of engaged with us throughout the process, so we will be working closely with them. I think it represents the intent of the department as we have developed it from the study, and it should carry you all the way through completion of the project. Some of the big unknowns, I think, are we developed the budget for this a fair amount of time ago. Costs fortunately have stayed relatively flat since almost 2008, but they have been going up some recently. I think one of the things we'll do very early on is look at the existing program, any little revisions to that, but we'll also be looking at the budget to make sure that, you know, we're still able to do all of the things, or if nothing else, we'll look at the budget we have and make sure that everything, we may have to make some revisions in program to stay within the budget. Those are, those are some of the initial discussions that we will have. So with that said, it is a fairly standard contract using AIA documents. They're pretty well time-tested. Even most of the things that get changed in contracts, I put them in pretty much in accordance with the changes that most city legal departments like to make in the contracts. We've got in place, you know, our insurance requirements, they're stated in there, the fees, and the entire working relationship. With that said, if there's any other questions, I'd be happy, happy to address them.
What's your timetable? How do you see this working out timelines?
Yeah, I think our, what we're really doing is working backwards from the time that the city can actually occupy the bank building, and I think right now that's looking summer.
April, base, October.
Yeah, you know, so we back up from there to give ourselves a one-month window for contractors to kind of get under contract and get mobilized, ready to start. We go another month back from there to a bid date. So we're shooting for a bid date about two months before the bank would be turned over to the city for actual possession and starting the construction work. Aside from that, we're probably looking at about a six-month timeframe in terms of doing the architectural services to get us up to the point of bidding. So we're getting close to the point where we'd want to engage the department in the review of the existing work, what's been done in the past, make sure everything is still on track, and then we'd start doing the initial conceptual design work. So from that startup with them of review to the date we're ready to put the drawings out on the street for bid, including all the, all the work we're going to be doing with the construction manager to make sure we're staying within the budget, is probably about a six-month window. I mean, you know, we can, we can speed things up, but we like to make sure that the feedback we're getting from the department and from the city in general is not rushing all of you to make decisions. So...
That sounds reasonable.
Yeah, you're talking about about an eight-month time from the date we can occupy the building. So we're getting, we're closing in on that.
Good, thank you.
So you've mentioned the word budget a number of times, and as a council, we're really cognizant of that fact, and I know Chief is too. It's really, really crucial. I know it's way too early for you to say that you can do it, but we did kind of guarantee the public that we were going to stay within a number, and so that's really crucial to us.
And ultimately, we put the initial numbers together, and we did it with certain assumptions about the bank building, such as we want to use as much of the mechanical system as we can. At the same time, we know this is going to be a 24/7 critical-use building, and so we know that we're going to make modifications to the heating and cooling system. We know a little bit about the power requirements, but until we really get into depth on the looking at that with our engineers, you know, we're not going to know precisely. When we developed the numbers for this, everything we were doing was looking at not, not what you would call doing it on the cheap, but trying to be conscientious with the dollars spent. We want to continue in that path. Our goal is this, and I think anytime you conduct a bond referendum and the public's involved in the numbers, you're establishing that as the budget, the budget that we have to hit. We, what we will do is, is within that initial estimate we put together, work in that direction. If we find we're pushing up against the budget, what we'll be doing is going back to the department to look for ways to prioritize what's going into the project and control what goes into it to stay within that budget. Now, if it comes down to certain things that they really feel that need to be kept in there, and it's, and we're having trouble working, working with it within that budget, we'll probably come back to you, not necessarily to try to increase the amount, but maybe to look at exactly what dollars are available. The bond referendum was run November. We have a pretty good idea of what the bond referendum, what it was run on, but sometimes, you know, the different pots of money that are set up within our budget, we're, we'll be looking at how much is for bricks and mortar and how much is for furnishing and furnishings, and, you know, we may, we may have to make some decisions about how we stay within the budget. It's all a management process, and the construction manager, with their construction background experience, will obviously be a powerful ally to us in that process. And the same with all of you. We will, we will not just plow ahead. When we make decisions about what goes into the project and maintaining the budget, the department and the city will be involved in those issues as we go through it.
I'm really glad to hear that. I think the part of the reason why I think we got the overwhelming vote was because we assured the citizens that we were going to be responsible in the spending, and I think they deserve to see that process play itself, play itself out all the way through. And I'm glad to hear you say what you're saying to us. I already know that we have the commitment from the, from the police chief and from the police department that we're not trying to, to build a champagne building on a beer budget, so, but at the same time, we don't want a subpar building either. So I think, I think we're right on the same page. I feel real satisfied with that, council. Anybody else? You three covered it well.
Yep.
My thoughts exactly. Okay.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Okay, since you made it back up with us now, can we get you to come on up and talk to us about the Apollo building? Thanks.
Eric.
Do you have a clicker?
No.
Thanks for your time again.
Welcome.
Pete Swiger out with Miller Valentine Group, 9349 Waterson Boulevard, Cincinnati. Well, since we last met, we've been working to put together a more formal proposal. What you have in front of you is really just a two-page, what I'll call a letter of intent that really just kind of summarizes the bullet points to how we could potentially acquire the building and convert it into housing. As discussed, our, really, our plan is, as it was last time, there are some, some minor changes as we looked into the building further. We had at one point talked about it might take multiple phases to actually develop the building fully. The reality is, I always think we come to the conclusion we can probably get the building converted in one phase. What?
It's going, it's just slow.
Slow, okay. Really, not much has changed, and my presentation hasn't changed much as either. One reason I'm going to flip through a few slides is I did get the opportunity to meet with the local neighborhood association to present, and presented basically the same story I presented to you last time, wanting to get their input and feedback. Hopefully, they were all, they all seemed, I think, I won't speak for them, but I think excited and interested in our development. I think we answered any concerns and questions that they have. Where I think, I'm going to just go, if you can, can you just thumb to the last slide?
Yeah.
It's basically a new schedule. And so I guess I wanted to present what our schedule would be. So here we are with a proposal that we would enter into a purchase agreement based on the terms in front of you. That would be the first step. So now that we have, in theory, site control, which would, we would hopefully secure over the next month or so, ideally, by the end of June, we would have that site control secured, where we would have a purchase agreement to purchase the building with certain contingency inspection periods and processes that we have to go through. The reality is, though, is there are many, many steps that we have to go through. It's not just go to IFA like it was last year with the Salter School. Before we can get to the housing tax credits, there are several other sources of funds that we need to line up and other processes we have to go through. So my goal is, is to present a schedule for you of how that we could, we could do this. In theory, like I said, over, by the, by the end of June, we would hopefully be entering to a purchase agreement where we would have site control. From there, we would go through two processes over the summertime. So starting in June, number one, we would pursue a historic designation. That goes ultimately to the National Park Service federally, but it starts here with your ship-o office and your state historic process. So we cannot do what we want to do without a historic designation and the historic tax credits that come along with that. The historic designation is to score points in the tax credit, the housing tax credit application, as well as the fact that it gives us 20% tax credits to help finance the project.
Is it the historic designation credits that give you the, that put you over the top for the ones that you meant for the?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the scoring. I think it's 10 points for historic. The category we lost from last year was eight points, so we should end up a little bit ahead, netting ahead a little bit. So that process, we need to get started in June because we need to hear, yes, you got the designation before we can even go into the housing credit process, because you have to have what's called a historic Part 1 by the time you make application. So that's the step, first step in the process. The other steps we have to do is to go to the Iowa Economic Development Authority, and they have three sources. They have what's called a workforce credit, a brownfield credit, and a grayfield credit. We think we're eligible for at least two of those, possibly three of those. We need to secure those in advance of the tax credit application. So we'll go through two processes over the summer, the historic process, and then the process with Iowa Economic Development Authority to secure what we'll call the secondary or gap financing sources. With all of that in place, by the end of the summer, early fall, we, if we could check those boxes, we can then say, okay, let's go on to the housing credit application, which would be applied just like last year in December, and we find out in March. So, and we would structure this all into the purchase agreement. We wouldn't have a purchase because, as you can tell, this is going to take through the end of '17 before we would actually be able to purchase the building. The way we've got the contract built is certainly once we get to certain hurdles, certain non-refundables might, money might go hard, but it's hard for us to put big money up front to begin because we're going to spend tens of thousands of dollars just going through a historic process, going through these workforce, the Economic Development Authority process. So we're going to have a lot of investment in on a project that isn't really there yet. So that's why you see a lot, a long, a long period to get through that, because ultimately, we've got to apply for multiple sources, secure multiple sources, and even then, once we've secured the sources, go through all sorts of due diligence, includes environmental cleanup, the construction, the design, the architecture, the engineering. So long story short, if we can get through all that process, we would be acquiring the building ideally late 2017. It would be about a 15-month build. We're not, at this point, anticipating any demolition of the building or any building additions, just using the existing building, converting it into housing historically, likely to develop about, in this case, 55 units is our new number. It would include market rate and tax credit units and would really be open to all, so it could certainly cater to seniors as well, but it would be open to a young family or a single, a young professional, really accommodating, and really, we should have a unit available for anyone in your community by the time said and done.
Is it the same, is it the same deal on the, the rent stays the same as long as they, as long as they stay there?
Yeah, they'll be paying their own rent. We do offer a discounted rent as part of the affordability of the tax credits. Most of the units will target 60% AMI, just like we talked about last time, 60% adjusted median income. 10% of the units or more will be market units that anyone can rent at any income. So with this, I think we're hoping you would potentially engage your formal process to potentially enter into an agreement with us. I think that would start, hopefully, with a purchase agreement, and then also a development agreement that would probably partner that, that would stipulate some of the other local resources that we're going to need, the incentives. In order to make this project feasible, I will say from day one is, and I think I've mentioned this in the last one, it will be imperative for us to have a 15-year TIF rebate. That is really important to the economics of this project and to our scoring. I think you're familiar with the whole concept of 7% of development cost. 15-year rebate might technically equate to slightly more than 7%, but it's very important to the pro forma because it will keep the taxes off the pro forma through the modeled life of the development, and from the lender-investor standpoint, that's a very important feature. So our request would be to purchase the building at the noted price, giving us the timeframes noted in the contract to get through all those processes, and then also help us by delivering the requested incentives, and ultimately, ending with 55 brand-new, high-quality, affordable units done to historic standards, green design, energy-efficient, 100% accessible. Should total around $11 million in the new building.
What about management? Do you have a manager on site?
Yeah, there will be a full-time onsite manager, so they'll have their own office in there, and then we'll also have a full-time maintenance service person.
That's important.
Bottom line is, we should know early in 2017 whether you've qualified and whether we can move forward with the project.
Yeah, there's probably a couple steps. So if we get through the historic and the workforce credits, the economic development processes, and for some reason, one of those doesn't come through, we'll cut bait early. It's not like we then say, oh, we're going to keep this under contract for another year. And we can write that into the purchase agreement that if you don't get these, then the contract would terminate, because we unfortunately just couldn't move it forward at that point.
I guess that would be my preference, but that's just me.
You guys good?
Yep.
All right. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. So, and just if I may, I guess in theory, next steps would be, how would we potentially, just so that I can be prepared to provide additional information or be back in front of you to more formalize or?
I guess part of that, we're working with our bonding attorney this, we will have to do an urban renewal plan amendment. The previous plan amendment was for the demolition of the building to do a TIF rebate. We have to do a plan amendment and then have a hearing on disposal, disposal of the property. He did say we could have a resolution expressing intent to proceed immediately with you and then work through that process, just so that you're assured.
Right.
We're going through with you, and then go through our plan amendment process and then sale process, which does take some time, but those are the kind of the steps that we need to go through. And part of that is your willingness or ability to do that, the requested 15-year TIF rebate, because that's part of the amendment process. So we need some conversation of, do we go forward with that? And that's something Pete needs to know as well.
Yeah. And I will mention, just to try and prevent processes for you until we get certain steps underway, from our perspective, you could put off that urban renewal amendment until we got to the funding, as long as you are aware and knowing that you're willing to commit that amount, the 15 years, and that you'll be willing to make those urban renewal amendments at the future time. So the last thing I would want to do is for you to do it now.
Yeah.
And then for us to go through this, and for some reason, one of these sources doesn't come through, and now you made an amendment for no reason.
Right.
So the Form 5S or whatever wouldn't require the urban renewal to be amended yet, but if you sign the 5S and say you're going to do that at some point, we would need to amend it.
Yeah. So that's something we can get from Bob Jost, our bonding attorney, on timeframes, and then come back before you and talk to Pete on what those timeframes are, and then in the meantime, that resolution expressing intent to.
Yeah.
Work with Pete would probably be the way to go.
That would, that would get us started, and then...
So we're, we're on this June 6 date, is that what you're saying, Eric?
Yeah, I can talk to Jim a little bit more when he gets back.
Okay.
That potentially could be the June 6 date.
Yeah, and if, and I don't know that that June 6 date was so specific. If we get something to the point where we can start moving in June, we should probably be in decent shape.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for...
That was just Jim.
Saunders &amp; Heitz folks, too.
That was Jim's comments, that email, and just your willingness to go forward with that 15-year abatement, want to make sure that, don't have to make a decision tonight, obviously, but.
Right.
That we're willing to go forward with that, so...
Good. Is that Mr. Anderson? Is that his name? Mr. Anderson, good to see you tonight. Good to see you tonight. We're going to keep rolling. Next, we have the number four, public hearing, consideration of plans and specifications of the 2016 Cascade Watershed Sewer Separation Project, Phase 2. Brian?
Looks like the computer's down. Okay, so this project would be the next phase in the sewer separation Cascade Basin. Cascade Basin is basically Harrison Street South in town. This project is addressing a few smaller locations within that area. We've already done one project. There's, we have six, I believe, locations that are smaller, one, two, four intake locations that will be installing new storm sewers to separate the storm off of the sanitary. Those locations are on Barrett between Liebrich and Garfield, the Windsor Circle area, Crestview, 16th Street. Oh, here we go. Maybe.
Yeah, it was.
It's maybe not.
Andy did it.
I can do it.
That's my new line. I'm just going to start blaming her for it.
Yeah, sorry.
Careful, she's got permission. Exactly.
I was always told you blame the person that's not here.
What's that?
I was always told you blame the person that's not here.
That's true.
You know what, Ryan, you're a smart guy. I need to listen to you more. It was Larry Williams' fault. Oh, he's here, my fault.
Yeah.
Well, I do have a map, if we can get things straightened up, of where these locations are.
Did you have it printed out at all?
I don't, actually.
There we go.
There we go. If we're lucky.
Looks like a map there.
Okay, here we go. These are the various locations where we'd be addressing those intakes. There's one on Barrett, a couple of existing, it's actually sanitary manholes that are just grated lids or have five holes in the lid that drain the area in Windsor Circle. We'd be installing a few intakes in that area, continuing that out, discharging into the detention pond northeast of the airport, the intersection of 16th and Barrett, not Barrett, sorry, Dunham, carrying that down through, down 16th and through an existing easement on to the trunk sewer at... an existing easement on to the trunk sewer at Fourteenth, a little bit on Tenth Street, couple of intakes there. The southeast corner of Crestview, got a couple of intakes there that tie into our sanitary sewer and then an intake on Concord near the intersection of Third. Like I said, cleaning up smaller areas. I will be back in, I would say, a month and a half probably, dealing with some other intakes on Dunham, more of a trunk line, less spread throughout the city. This project will require the acquisition of a few easements. It's actually more clarification of existing easements. We've got sanitary sewers throughout town running through private property with easements that are either difficult to find or non-existent. We'd be clarifying those easements as a part of this project as well. Next, we actually have a cost estimate for you. Funding should be through the Cascade Sewer budget, which has been utilized for MSL as well due to that project. Coming up first, last I knew, I believe we had two-point-three million in it minus what was done for MSL. Our intent would be to receive bids around June first and then construction would be this summer. Any questions from the council?
Couldn't have got us a cheaper bid, Ryan?
Don't have any yet.
Oh, okay. Now I guess I've got no reason to shake my head yet, huh?
Generally, the answer's no, though.
Alrighty.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
All right, next we have a public hearing, consideration of budget amendment number one for FY 2015-2016 budget.
Okay, in your packet, it showed the budget document that was published in the paper that was published last week, at least the timeframe we need to publish before the public hearing next week. So basically, I created a work paper, Eric is gonna bring it up if we can get to it, just showing the reasons why we're amending some of the budget. So I'll just quickly kind of go through. If you have any questions, let me know. This is for the fiscal year we're in right now. That will end June thirtieth, 2016. And we are increasing for revenues, road use, that was, we budgeted last year before we knew we were gonna have the fuel tax. You'll see there's quite a few for targeted jobs. Those two are, at the time we budgeted last year, not sure exactly what that, the monies that we would bring in. And those are ins and outs. We bring the money in and then we turn around and cut the checks back to the entities. I also budgeted in the million dollars that we received for the Newberry Village that wasn't planned. We anticipate we're gonna get about four-hundred-and-fifty thousand in local option sales tax, more than we budgeted, about eighty thousand in hotel motel. And then the bond proceeds for 2016B, that's the refunding bond. So we budgeted for our capital projects bond, but again, refunding, that's always a year-to-year look at what makes sense to refund and refinance, so. And then we would like to increase the transfers just because we've got a lot of going in and out with the police building. You know, we receded that Newberry Village CBG money and then we'll be transferring it to another fund, TIF transfers, road use transfers and lost, just different ways we're transferring money. So on the expenditure side, we are increasing public safety. We've, we're over on fire overtime. We also, for police, we had training and physicals for four new officers and that's because we have the cops grant. So we were hiring more than what we actually had budgeted. Road use, you know, we've had different projects come out. You've seen the lights out on Roosevelt that have been needing repair. So that's where a lot of that expense is coming from for the lights, buying the LED lights and also installing them and repairing them. The comp study wasn't budgeted, we're increasing that. Professional fees, that's our attorney fees, are a little bit higher than what we budgeted. Also, again, we're, on the expense side, we're budgeting for that refunding amount. We actually called that bond, the 2008 bond, back in August, if you remember that, and paid that. That's where federal mogul was paying their targeted jobs. So that wasn't budgeted in this fiscal year. And then the other part is the two-point-three million for the refunding bond we're doing. Again, culture and rec, those are, you know, expense expenditures for the hotel motel monies and auditorium. And the way, we're not technically gonna be spending more on the auditorium, it's just how we record the expenses from venue works and put them in our books. So since they're having more activity, they'll have more expenses than what we originally budgeted. So we just like to put in an estimate.
Does some of that have to do with the fact that our, that we don't have our city guys doing most of the stuff now? Is that, is that some of that?
No, I just think this year they're having more activities down there.
Oh, it's just strict.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll, you know, the revenue will be, you know, again, bottom line is we're not gonna have to pay more money for our auditorium, but on the expense side, we have to record all their expenses and all their revenues in our books. So just to, the way they're trending, it's a little bit higher than what we had budgeted. We, in economic, or sorry, community and economic development, we paid off the waterworks TIF debt that we had owed them. That was about two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. You'll see all the targeted job amounts again. Then that's, you know, revenue coming in and expenses coming out. And then on the capital project side, we did, we are increasing some expenditures. We received some public safety grants on the fire side that we didn't have budgeted. Also, for the purchase of the bank building on Friday, we had budgeted, we were gonna spend seven-hundred-thousand dollars to rehab the current building. Well, that, of course, has changed. So I increased the budget by half a million to get up to that one-point-two million that we paid for the building on Friday. And then parking lot ramp wasn't in the budget. Flood projects, those, of course, weren't in the budget. Those were, that was the flood from last summer that fell into this fiscal year. And then on the business type, we had a few projects. The sewer project was that DAF controls, that was budgeted in a different year, so. And then the Packer truck on Solid Waste, too, that was budgeted in 15, but we're actually purchasing it now. And then Water Works, again, Water Works, Burlington Municipal Water Works budget is in our budget. So we looked at their expenses and from what we had budgeted, we're increasing that four-hundred thousand, so. And then transfers, I do the same expense transfers as I do revenue transfers. They need to be even, so. A lot more than you wanted? The bottom line is there's, the revenues are offsetting the expenses that we're increasing, so. Okay, yeah.
You guys have any other, any questions for Steph?
Any other information you might want for next week or is this, okay, if something comes up, let me know and we can get it for the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you for the details I've ever seen.
I was just hearing you say, "Good job, Steph, good job." Okay, next we have a public hearing, a consideration of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Summer Street right-of-way located east of the property of 215 Summer Street, Burlington, Iowa, through the first reading. Does anyone?
Show a map here. I had a request from the property owner, 215 Summer, which is directly south of the Walgreens on Central and Division. They're at the dead end of Summer Street as it goes towards Walgreens. And they've been looking for ways to build a garage for the last couple of years. They'd applied for variance before and just came to the request of asking for a portion to be vacated. There are no utilities in that right-of-way. There is a monitoring station on city property. The city owns this triangle to the east of the lot as well. And just did desire to maintain at least five feet off of that property line for city, for city property. Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on April nineteenth and voted six to zero to recommend approval based on the status as a dead-end roadway that only serves the property at 215 Summer Street, the lack of ability for future travel away, access through the right-of-way, along with desire for ownership and maintenance of the right-of-way by the applicant. Also, the utilities come east and west through, I guess the Aetna right-of-way over to Summer Streets. There's no utilities that go through this as well. This portion, fifty-four feet by twenty-five feet would be vacated and sold to the property at 215 Summer and attached to their property. Any questions on that?
For one time, the council?
It's a road to nowhere.
One of many.
I'm fine with it.
You guys good?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Let's just roll right along. Next is consideration of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of South Fourteenth Street right-of-way located west of the property at 1412 Hillary Avenue, Burlington, Iowa. It's first reading as well.
So now, always get the unusual requests. This one, 1412 Hillary, there's a, I guess, unusual right-of-way here as well, where it juts in for the property at 1412 Hillary and then comes out for the property along Linwood to the north. And they had requested to vacate a portion of this right-of-way in order to build a larger garage or shed on the property. Upon review, it was found that there is an existing shed on the city right-of-way currently and a portion of fence. Do not have any utilities in the twelve-feet portion, which would allow their existing shed and fence to be on private property, but it's not vacating as much as they would desire just based on the utilities that are within the right-of-way. The Planning Commission, again, met on April nineteenth and they voted zero to six to approve vacating the described right-of-way based on the status that they were currently not complying with city code. They currently had existing structures on the right-of-way, so they didn't wanna, I guess, part of the basis was they didn't wanna vacate just to correct the issue. Even though it would correct the issue, they didn't feel that it was proper to vacate since it was already had structures on the right-of-way. So if it does not go forward through the process or approved by council, the existing structures would be required to be removed from the right-of-way. And then if, based on the review of the request, a maximum of twelve feet is all that could be vacated in order to keep existing utilities within the right-of-way. So the Planning Commission had concerns that there already was a structure on the right-of-way and didn't feel vacating based on that was appropriate, but it would allow those structures to be brought on to their private property if it were vacated. And it's not vacating as much as he had desired because it's just going to that twelve feet, but that's all that we felt was appropriate based on the utilities in the right-of-way.
Counsel?
Do we have any use for that property?
No.
Yeah, I don't understand what's going on here. Cause I was, we walked by there a lot and I went, just the other day I went there. Why is there such a big right-of-way there?
Looks like originally that lined up with the South Fourteenth Street right-of-way to the south, this line does.
Okay, now that makes sense.
I'm guessing we have two different subdivisions, aren't we?
Yeah, yeah, there's multiple subdivisions. Each corner is probably a different subdivision and the roads came in at different times. And this, actually, this southern portion might have been platted with this. And then when this northern portion, so I'm zooming in. So if these were all platted together, the right-of-way lined up, but then this northern one lined up with the north roadway and it just created this one lot that was off-centered. And there happens to be some utility lines that kind of angle in this area.
So I'm trying to understand why we should deny this.
The twelve feet, it doesn't seem to be the reason other than there's existing structures there, but we want them to conform anyway.
A punitive, like you built there, you're not gonna get what you want. That doesn't make sense to me.
I guess I can kind of understand at least the point of view because it's like, it's easier to beg for forgiveness than to ask for permission. That's kind of how I feel, but, I mean, we don't have a use for it and I get it, though, considering they're already.
I'm only guessing that the person is innocent, that they didn't realize that they, after taking care of that property for the years that they've lived there, that where the property line was and they wanted to increase the size of their garage. And to get that, they had to get a permit and that's when they found out that they were on city right-of-way rather than on their property. So I understand what you're saying, but I really don't think that was the case. I don't know, I haven't talked to people. I'm only guessing that it's.
No, I mean, that makes sense, too, cause.
Innocence there that they, I'm siding with the side of the citizen at this point that'd be the case, because I've seen it happen before. We don't have a use for it. I don't see it as being a huge issue.
It's usually my stated position. I don't like to go against what the Plan Commission recommends, but I just don't understand this, why it's.
And sheds under a hundred-and-fifty square feet, we don't require permits, so he wouldn't, for the existing shed, probably wouldn't have contacted us. And until about eight years ago, we didn't require fence permits, so there's, and if you look at the property of the north, you, I could see where you'd naturally think, why do I have a forty-foot right-of-way when everyone else has twelve or fifteen?
Bob Fleming, give us wisdom.
Amen, brother.
Sounds good to me. We all have.
I don't know.
We've got some time to think about it and to get our questions answered, so.
It has to go three readings, right?
That's right. Okay, well, we're gonna go ahead and move along. Number eight, we're at a resolution approving a loan agreement authorizing, I'm sorry, issuance of one million two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollar general obligation corporate purpose bond, series 2016A, and providing for the levy of taxes. City manager?
This is just another step in the process of selling those bonds is approving these resolutions. So nothing's changed from what Trap was presented before. The one-point-two million, ninety-five thousand, that's to do the capital projects for FY seventeen that have been budgeted and approved. And then the 2016 bond is the refunding that we're gonna go through with to save the money on interest.
Yep.
You guys have any, any questions on that?
None.
Gone over it a number of times.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move right to number ten. A resolution approving audit services for fiscal years 2013 through 2015 with McGladrey LLP.
So that title is wrong. That was the resolution from back in 2013, so we'll get that corrected. But in the packet, you'll see our, the audit committee, we went out, I'll start over. We went out for RFP for our audit services. We wanted to get a three-year bid with a two-year optional. So if you look in the packet, Exhibit B shows the three audit firms that were mailed out, RFPs, when they were returned and then what their bids were. And then the audit committee met on Thursday to look over the bids. The low bid was Anderson, Larkin and Company. They're out of Etamwa. They do the city of Etamwa's audit. They also have a GFA report and get the certification. They've had it for twenty-two years. So the audit committee is recommending that we award our business to Anderson, Larkin and Company. Will save at least five thousand dollars a year from McGladrey, who we currently have now. They were the next lowest bid. So I will get that resolution changed if we're all in agreement tonight that we're fine with going with the lower bid here. We'll do a contract through, for the next five years for Anderson, so.
Did I remember correctly, McGladrey had an extra charge involved with the?
They did have an extra charge this year, municipal fire and police. Yeah. So I, we won't have that with Anderson either, so.
Awesome. You guys good?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have a resolution approving the final plat of Burlington Crossing subdivision. Thank you, thank you, all zero of you, but thanks anyways.
The money is in the bank as of Friday afternoon.
Excellent. Does anybody, anything they wanna say about that besides, yes. All right.
It's just part of this, the final plat is seven lots with the roadway, Legacy Drive. There is an improvement agreement as part of this. Right now, the letter of credit isn't filled in. We should get that this week for, that's a credit for the public infrastructure since they're plating before that, the roadway's all in. But they do plan to have that starting construction here this summer and hopefully done this fall. Yep, so that, that number will be put in there once we get that from the bank. Again, plating seven lots with a public roadway connecting agency to Market. And probably will see future subdivisions as they sell lots, possibly splitting up some of the lots into smaller lots down the road. But right now, seven lots with a couple of outlots for Stormwater and then a lot for Legacy Drive connecting agency down to Market Street.
Excellent. I just wanna read these, these two one more time. Number eleven, resolution approving the. Number eleven, resolution approving the final plat of Burlington Crossing subdivision. And number twelve, resolution approving agreement with Police Facility Design Group, PA, for the Burlington Police Facility renovation. I'm outta here. I'm gonna leave on a high note. I'm gonna go actually touch up my water, could you, uh, go ahead, move this forward. Is that awesome, or what? Give me a five. Timmy? Mayor project, that's what I'm talking about. You really did? No, I'm just getting some water, but I'm jacked up about that.
Okay, on the, on the consent agenda, we have a resolution approving agreement with BNSF for Angu- excuse me, Angler Street Sewer and Depot drainage issues. Wow. Nice, Steve.
This resolution is bringing, uh, kinda to an end, kind of a longstanding issue that we've had ongoing. I know since I was here, we started discussions with, uh, BNSF clear back in October of two thousand thirteen, making them aware of the problem. The problem, from the city's point of view, is the fact that, uh, there really has been lack of drainage in the depot area, and from our point of view, that's happened when the, when the railroad came in and raised the tracks, and it's our belief that they cut off the storm sewer that allowed the water to drain out of that area down to the Angler Street Sewer, so... We started some discussions, making them aware of that, like I said, in, in two thousand thirteen. In, uh, two thousand fourteen, in the fall, there were some problems observed with the Angler Street Sewer, uh, to the point that the top of the arch was starting to have stones and, and ballast come through. Engineering put plans and specs together this next spring, uh, of, uh, in June of two thousand fifteen to make those repairs. When BNS took a look at it, they felt that those designs were not up to their E-eighty track standard, so they came in and made the improvements on their own. Subsequent to that, uh, I guess I personally felt this was a point to say, when they made those repairs, they felt it was our responsibility to take care of the sewer, and they were wanting some reimbursement for that. So felt it was a good point in time to say, we're not really prepared to give you any money until you fix our other problem. So we've, uh, been kinda going back and forth. Last year, uh, in the summer and fall, BNSF did take a look to try to see what could take to correct those problems, and really, we, we didn't really come to a resolution, but we did have a meeting in, in, uh, March eighth of this year, where we all sat down together with BNSF. And essentially, what you see as a result of that is, is this agreement that you'd be approving, and it's doing several things. Uh, we've discovered through this process that we can put in our own sewer and drain it back to the north into the Market Street Sewer. So that's the first aspect, and we're gonna do that at our own cost. The, uh, as part of this, uh, BNSS, BNSF have agreed not to ask for any reimbursement for the repairs of the work they did to the Angler Street Sewer. Another part of this agreement is that annually, both parties will inspect the Angler Street Sewer to see if there's any issues ongoing. And the fourth part of it is, uh, in a hundred, within a hundred and eighty days of signing this, we need to, both parties need to sit down and come to a resolution to, uh, confirming the ownership and ongoing maintenance of the Angler Street Sewer. So, uh, as staff, we recommend you approve this. The plans and specifications for that sewer, uh, Ryan has not had time in the engineering group. Expect that to be done sometime later, hopefully so it could be out to bid later this fall. I don't know, just one other little thing, we have had a lot of water in the basement, we have got a temporary pump system, it's not had a lot of rain. If you've driven by the depot, you'll see kind of a blue tube coming out of there, uh, with wood on each side. So that house kind of enabled construction to go on without a lot of ongoing pumping the water down, once it gets built back up underneath the depot.
Since you mentioned that construction, how, how's it going? What's happening there?
It's moving right along, I mean, they're working on the electrical, we've had several change orders. Um, one, the, the electric, one of the change orders, uh, had to do with, uh, the electrical. They were hoping to pull a lot of wires through the existing conduit. They've not been able to do that, the old wire had fused at some point, and they were not able to get it through. Uh, we've had to have a change order to, essentially, they were gonna reuse the old furnace that was their heating, the curtain, the, uh, what was the old ticket booth and the waiting area that was closed off. We found a lot of issues with that, so we made a decision to put in a, a new furnace, like, that's like twenty-five hundred bucks. The electrical, uh, we've had to put some structural support for the, the, the roof design after they got everything opened. Uh, their concrete beams in there, and to put the rooftop unit on the top there, top, there had to be a little additional structural support. Trying to think, we just, just signed another little change order again today. Some, some electrical repairs, but I think right now, we're at about fifteen thousand of change orders. We had, I think, about thirty-five thousand. When we put the budget together, there was like thirty-five thousand somewhere in that range, plus or minus, to, to allow for contingencies. So we are eating away at it, but so far, we're in good shape. But the, the work's steadily coming along, uh, we've got a revised schedule. I don't think it'll be done until probably sometime, probably August at least, that'll be the earliest.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Everybody else is good?
Good.
Groovy. Okay, uh, next we have a resolution awarding contract for the two thousand sixteen wastewater treatment, uh, facility, S and D building, uh, roof replacement. Right?
Should really let Don take this, since he...
Let's let Don take this.
Since I've already told him that I'd take care of it.
Don just pointed, Don just pointed at you, so...
Okay, so... So this is projects for the replacement of three ballasted roofs at the wastewater treatment plant with unballasted, uh, EPDM roofs. It's in the current budget to replace the roof of the S and D, uh, building down at the wastewater treatment plant, S and D, solid and disinfection, if you care. Uh, two other roofs were coming up in the next couple of years that are gonna need replaced, and the budget for, current budget was thirty-three thousand that Don hadn't. It was, since we've got these others coming up in the next couple of years, why don't we just put together the project to address all three? Uh, we can let it as three individual roofs or lump it together, depending on how bids come in. We sent plans out to four contract, roofing contractors, uh, and then required a project site meeting, so the contractors saw what the actual conditions are, knew what they're getting into. There's no questions, or if they have questions, we can get them addressed ahead of time. Quotes were received from one contractor on April twenty-seventh, uh, that contractor being Brockway Mechanical here in town. They provided individual, uh, quotes for each roof, and then, uh, quote for damaged insulation, because the roofs are being replaced for a reason, uh, leaks occur damaging insulation, that needs to be replaced. However, until you get the roof taken off, you don't know exactly what it is, so we asked for a square foot price. Uh, additionally, Brockway provided an alternate quoted price, if all three roofs were to be replaced, of fifty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. Uh, following the receipt of this quote, uh, I communicated with Don and Stephanie as far as what the budget considerations were on which route they felt they wanted to take. Through that communication, back and forth, we determined that the replacement of all three roofs, uh, should be done. It provides savings of four thousand, nearly five thousand dollars, I believe, uh, if it's done, all three roofs now, instead of spanning it out over the next couple fiscal years.
Did, did we have, uh, we don't have it, we don't have a hard number on, uh, insulation, do we?
No, there is no hard number on insulation.
You don't have, uh, do you got a, a medium, medium hard, medium boiled egg hard number?
I, until that roof gets taken off, you can't really know what's there. Uh, I do know that there's, you have a nice gap in one roof that's been patched before. I would guess probably at a minimum, you'd be looking around two hundred square feet. I mean, a ten-by-twenty stretch, something like that. Unless Don has some better guidance on an expectation.
Just from my information, since I don't know the difference between a ballasted and unballasted roof, what does that mean?
Uh, the ballasted roof is a, basically a rubber sheet is put down, and then river rock aggregate's placed on the top of it. River rock's placed on the top of it to hold it in place. Uh, the EPDM roof, they'll remove that ballasted, uh, the EPDM's either glued down or anchored down. Um, it doesn't have the rock on the top, holding it in place.
So what do you think of that, Jim?
I learned something. That's good.
You guys good?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Seems like we just keep spending money for Don. Almost every week, Don has something here to spend money.
He's always smiling, too. He's always smiling. All right, uh, come on down, chief. We have resolution approving fire department fees for American Heart Association classes.
All right, we've, we've had fees for a long time for CPR, basic CPR. We've t- we teach those, you know, twice a month, uh, ever since I've been on the fire department. But we've had a couple requests to do, add these other classes, uh, advanced cardiac life support and pediatric advanced life support, and they're fairly long, especially the initial class, it's an eight-hour class. So for us to tell people to come in, oh, yeah, we can teach you, that's quite a commitment. Uh, we've get, we've trained two people in the last two years to teach both of those classes, so we have to have them come in off-duty to teach the class, so there's an expense to the fire department. Normally, for a regular CPR class, all we're getting back is the cost of the card. This is what we pay American Heart to get the card, so, and we encourage people to take CPR, so we want, we'll teach anybody that wants to learn CPR, we'll do that. These classes are a little more advanced, they're for paramedic, paramedic level classes, so we couldn't very well pay somebody to come in on overtime for an eight-hour shift, and then not, then charge somebody twenty-five dollars for a card. That's, so we're not making money, but we're not, we felt we didn't wanna lose money, but we wanna offer the service if people wanna come, so if you find other rates for maybe the University of Iowa or something for these two classes, they're probably a little bit more, 'cause they're trying to, they're running a business trying to make money off these classes. We really just wanna be able to, you know, have somebody from Superior or one of the other ambulance services around here. If they need the class, then, then we'll offer it. And a lot of times, if one of our guys needs the refresher or the renewal at the same time, we, we put them in the same class, so it can do dual, dual purpose, so... Pretty, pretty straightforward. I, I don't know that we ever had a resolution for the CPR classes, I, that's, was way before my time that we, we had those, but...
Good stuff, good stuff. Hey, you know what? I don't think I've ever seen you without your haircut. Is that Mama standing on top of that, or is that you?
That's Mama on this one.
I kinda figured.
This one was.
Yeah, I kinda figured, it's Mama every time, so... Thank you, chief. Um, we have some, uh, public hearings set for June sixth. First is a consideration of voluntary severance of territory located north of Florence Avenue.
What's that?
It's a property, uh, lift off Irish Ridge that you have to access through county property to get to. There's a large drainage area there, it's a triangular shaped piece, but, have more information at the next meeting.
Okay. And then the other one is a consideration of a permanent encroachment agreement with the Art Guild of Burlington Inc. for encroachment into right-of-way at three oh one Jefferson Street, Burlington, Iowa. Everybody else?
Do you have anything you wanna say?
Okay. All right then, um, the annual fire report?
So I took this annual report from the booklet form and made it into a PowerPoint for tonight, so it may not follow exactly along, it's in chronological order, but... All right. So that's our mission statement, it's on the front page. I'm gonna go right into our... Need to remember to click myself ahead while I'm talking. Actually, there's, that's what the Burlington Fire Department looked like on January first of two thousand sixteen, so right after the, the first of the year. That's our organization chart, a little bit different than what it was last year. A couple new officers, a new battalion chief, a new deputy chief, uh, two new lieutenants from last year. Uh, we had a vacancy when we started the new year, somebody had resigned back in December. Uh, we've since filled that position in, uh, March, so we're back up to, uh, forty-two that people assigned to shifts, or forty-one people assigned to shifts, uh, forty-four altogether. However, starting July, or June, in June, two people are leaving the fire department, one for medical school. Uh, he graduates this weekend, matter of fact, from college, and then the other one's retiring June first. So those two bottom positions will, will no longer be on there, will be at, uh, thirteen people per shift. Total staffing of forty-two, county administration. I was just gonna mention, we filled the vacancy with a, a veteran firefighter out of Fort Madison, a firefighter paramedic. He's has, uh, ten or eleven years on the job, so we got a really good, uh, new hire, somebody that, that came in. We only had a couple weeks of recruit training, and he put him right to work, so...
And that's a good break.
It's turned out really good, that, yeah, that doesn't usually happen. I'm just moving into the areas that we, we cover, fire prevention, uh, is one of the big ones. Uh, something that we were able to do this year is update our pre-plans, and we moved to an online format. So when we go out to a, a commercial building, uh, all the vehicles, the command vehicle and the two first-out engines and the ambulances have iPads now. Uh, they can get on there and they can click a pre-plan for the buildings that we've done, and it's on the GIS website. So if you know Austin, uh, from GIS that works in the county, uh, he's been very helpful in, in us getting that going, along with Battalion Chief McGee and, uh, firefighter Skiff Stat. So it's really neat when we, we show up to say, I'm trying to think of something that we've done. Uh, Sunnybrook Assisted Living Center, uh, we show up there, you can click on the pre-plan, you can see where all the exits are. There's some things with the, uh, sprinkler system there, and the, uh, that's different than a lot of other places, so it's nice to be able to bring that up to remind yourself, hey...
That is nice.
This is what's going on here, here's all the contact information, it's all online. Before, everything was paper. Uh, in the back of our command car, there's a couple files, they're still in there, just cram full of papers, but the problem is that they don't ever get updated when they're on paper, 'cause you gotta totally recreate the whole document to change. Usually, it's the owner information, phone numbers, that kinda thing, so, uh, we got those, uh, got that going. That was one of our goals that we had had from two thousand fourteen. Um, the other one was, uh, completed all required inspections. Mark found four hundred and sixty-five fire code violations last year. Uh, that was another one of our goals that we had, uh, to make sure that we got all the required inspections done.
Is that normal? A normal number?
Yeah, well, some years, there's more inspections, like we instituted the hotel motel inspections, well, that's every other year, so like this coming year, there'll actually be more required inspections, so... Uh, we installed six hundred and ninety smoke alarms last year. We did that big community-wide event, one-day event with the Red Cross, the Elks and others that helped us with that. Fire Marshal Crook spent eighty hours on thirty-nine structure fires, and what, what that means is, on the actual scene, so he averages about two hours on the fire scene itself, so, I just go through my head, that's about two weeks where the time he's on a fire scene, but that's just a drop in the bucket to what he does afterwards. He's working with the state fire marshal's office, the Burlington Police Department, insurance companies following up on these fires, doing a lot of investigation, which, we haven't figured out a way to, to track that, 'cause it's working on this fire, working on this fire, so it, he does spend a lot of time doing investigations. And then some of the other things that, uh, it's hard to put a number on is the plan reviews, but anytime there's a new building and, uh, remodel, reconstruction, addition, uh, Mark's gotta go over the plans, look at the sprinkler and fire alarm systems, and then he goes out there and performs a test on those as well. Uh, we did a lot of public education events. Whenever we're out in the public, we try to make it an education event, whether we're in a school or with a neighborhood association, or presenting to the numerous, uh, you know, the Rotary Club, uh, Lions Club, anything like that. We try to, to present a, a fire prevention, uh, message with that. Moving on to our operations last year, um, one of our goals was to review and update all of our internal policies, and I, I can't take very much credit for that, that was the new deputy chief, uh, Deputy Chief Ryan. He's totally updated, revamped all of our internal policies, got them in an organized fashion, uh, has them set up for annual reviews, which is great, so none of our policies should get out of date, and it, which they do really easy when you have promotions or change of vehicle stuff, uh, needs to be updated, so he's taking care of that. Uh, we did promotional exams, I kind of already mentioned that, we, uh, did all that internally. Uh, we hired a deputy chief, battalion chief, and two lieutenants, uh, that was another one of our goals. And then we applied for and received, uh, numerous grants. Uh, we received an assistance to firefighters grant for twenty-two thousand that we use for vehicle extrication equipment. Uh, ADM gave us thirty-four hundred toward those iPads for the pre-planning that we put in the, the vehicles. Uh, ADM gave us thirty-four hundred toward those iPads for the pre-planning that we put in the, the vehicles. Um, Homeland Security, thanks a lot to Gina Harden, uh, Des Moines County Emergency Management.
Thanks Gina.
She just asked us, hey, is there anything, you know, we say, yeah, we could use thermal imagers. And she writes the grant, she submits them, she pays for it, we just tell her and then we get the stuff. So it works out really good for us, so.
Give her an extra pat on the back, good job Gina.
Yeah, so we got, we got thermal imagers, a lot of, some other hazmat metering equipment. And then we've had several classes, matter of fact, we got another one tomorrow that she, she's funding. They're, they're very expensive, one day class, just to bring the instructor here is five thousand dollars for an eight hour class. So we normally, that would, that's half our fire training budget, we wouldn't do that on our own, but, she gets a grant, that works out great. Uh, the big thing last summer was the bird, bird flu response. And I've been to two conferences since then, and they bring that up and they actually talk about the Burlington Fire Department. We had six members of our hazmat team go, and they think that's.
You represented for the bird flu.
Yes, we were the largest, any single hazmat team, we had the most people that responded. And there was much larger cities involved than, than Burlington, so it was a great experience for our guys to go. Uh, we established an engine and ambulance, uh, committees last year, you know, we've ordered the, the new engine. Can't get here soon enough, I can tell you that. Hopefully next week, Thursday, we're going out there to do the final inspection. They fix anything that's wrong overnight and then we bring it back on Friday, so. Let's see. The next thing on there is we did a countywide renumbering of fire and EMS vehicles. Uh, something that's been talked about in Des Moines County responders, oh, I don't know, ten or fifteen years. We want to renumber our vehicles and we want to have the numbers mean something. But we're just, we can never agree on who's going to get what set of numbers and what the numbers are going to mean. And actually, that's another thing Deputy Chief, uh, Donnie Ryan got that going again. And he's the vice president of the Des Moines County Firefighters Association, he brought it up through there. He developed the numbers, he sent them out, got them approved. And now every fire department and every ambulance service was us, Superior and Minneapolis now have standardized numbering system. So if you don't listen to a scanner, you probably wouldn't notice, but a lot of people are like, what do these numbers mean? Because we're not saying engine or truck or command, we're saying just a number. So if you hear seven oh one, you know, seven hundreds is the Burlington Fire Department, any number in the seven hundreds. So seven oh one is the chief, so se- I, seven oh one, uh, West Burlington is the five hundred, so five oh one is the chief. Five twenty, anything in the five twenties would be an engine. So when somebody comes, you know what their, what kind of vehicle they're bringing with them. So it's been quite an achievement to get the whole county on board with that. And I'm sure Donnie wouldn't take all the credit for that, he just facilitated, everybody did have to agree to change their number, so. Uh, we taught, or we sent, uh, two hundred and seventy-six twelve lead EKGs to the hospital. We would do more, however, only two of our EKG monitors are currently capable of that. I think that's in the next fiscal year's budget to buy three more EKG, uh, twelve lead monitors we'll be able to send from every unit. So there are some calls that we go out on, they would like to send a twelve lead to, directly to the hospital, but they can't do that. They can take it, they can read it, they can call it into the hospital, but they can't send it directly for the doctor to look at, so. Uh, the best, the, the thing about that is if they're having an MI, a heart attack, and you send that into the hospital and they read it and they confirm it, they'll, they'll get the, you'll just skip the ER and go right into the cath lab with the patient, which is, you're trying to reduce that time from when we pick them up to when they're in the cath lab, getting their stents put in or bypass or whatever they need, so. I just, that eliminates some of that time. Uh, we taught forty-two CPR classes, again, we do at least two per month, so that's twenty-four right there. Then a lot of the other ones are on request, if somebody calls and says, hey, I need a, like a daycare center or something, we'll have a lot of staff that needs CPR certified, then we'll set them up for a day just for them, so. We do a lot of that. I listed in here all the members that are on boards and committees. And that's one thing I've encouraged especially our officers to do, is to get involved with Des Moines County EMS, Des Moines County Fire, uh, MABUS, Henderson County, uh, EMS and Fire. There's a lot of different organizations that we should, as the largest fire department in the community around the area, we should be involved in all these different committees, so we've actually, I'm not saying we're taking over, but we've, we're now in leadership positions on a lot of those boards, presidents, vice presidents, treasurers.
We're taking over.
Yeah, that's, some people might say that, but, so we, I'm not going to go through all of it, but we're, we're involved in. If there's something fire EMS related, we're, we're involved in the committee. The next thing is training. That's outside of actually running our calls, that's probably the, the, the next important, most important thing that we do. Um, last year, just a, a total of hours that's recorded, I know there's hours that people aren't putting into the training software, so it doesn't get recorded, but we had seven thousand and eight hours of training, so about a hundred and sixty hours on average per person, which sounds like a lot, but it's really not meeting the standard. The standard for fire training is a hundred and ninety-two hours of fire training. Then the drivers need an additional, and we're down here, drivers need an additional twelve hours, and then our paramedics, for a two-year cycle, they need sixty hours, so about thirty hours per year. So you're looking upwards of two hundred and fifty hours per year of training to keep up with the, uh, what's, what's required. I say what's required, it's the standard, we're, we're, you know, EMS, yes, you have to meet the standard or you lose your certification. On the fire side, there's no certification, but when you get inspected by ISO, they're going to look and say, how much training are you doing? So we're trying to meet the ISO standard, also the NFPA standard. The next thing there is the ARF simulator, that's the airport or aircraft rescue and firefighting. Um, two years ago, I met with the airport board on several occasions about keeping our people certified to, to cover the airport. And they thought that was very important there, they are paying, uh, the department, I believe, nine thousand a year for airport coverage. So their aircraft aren't actually large enough to require certification, but they want us to be certified in case they would ever get that, that back for the airport. So we used to send people up to Dubuque or Cedar Rapids or somewhere, it was really costly to do that. And this is still costly, but we bring it here, last year we were able to do it on two shifts. Uh, so those guys and then plus anybody that was, wanted to come in off duty could take the certification class with the, the instructor. So we're doing that, we're doing that every year, it's an annual certification that you have to, to go through. Um, live fire training at SCC last year, which was really good Eric, I lost my. We work a lot with SCC, we're on the EMS and Fire Boards, we do a lot of training with them. If their students need something, which was the live fire training, they just call us up and say, hey, we have the instructors, we have the props, can you guys just come out and train with our students? And we're like, yeah, this is great, so we just send guys as they can go out and, uh, train. And I, I keep saying guys, we do have a gal, I apologize, so guys, guys and gals.
She's tough too.
People, personnel. I have three people, last year went to the National Fire Academy in Emmitsburg, Maryland. Uh, myself and two other officers were able to go out there for different classes. And then we've continued to do the NFPA fourteen-ten drills, which are the, go out on the street and, uh, there's requirements as far as hook into a hydrant, how far much hose you have to lay out, getting the hose off the truck, setting the ladder up, there's different, there's about thirteen different drills. Uh, the guy that's doing our fire training, he sets that up every month, sends out a, okay, this is the drill for the month. They start practicing the drill, and sometimes they complain like, you can't make this, this is too, too short of a time period. But they usually figure it out by the end of the month, okay, we can meet the time by doing something a little different, so. Uh, then what happens at the end of the month, the deputy chief goes out with them and then he, he, uh, evaluates their performance, makes sure they meet the, the time requirement, so. I think the guys really enjoy doing that, it's out, it's out there doing stuff that.
We've got good numbers.
The problem is, is when it's really hot, I know that gets to be a really good numbers on.
On our, uh, I, I've jumped ahead.
Oh, you jumped ahead, okay, I'll, I'll jump ahead to the next one. I stole this from the, uh, police department, so thank you Chief Beard. So I, those are our, these are our numbers, if they come up here, but they, I stole the graph from the police department report. I thought that was pretty interesting and I'm afraid to click it again, should I click it again?
No, it's here.
Okay. So I just thought it was interesting, Deputy Chief Ryan, he, he made this for me. So our average number of years of service is thirteen point two. And you can see, actually, there's nobody with thirteen years on, but that's the average somehow. The span of years there, we must not have had any hiring or people had left. But we do have a lot of people with twelve, twelve years or less on the job. And you can see we had that spike when we had the, the safer grant a couple of years ago. So a lot of people, eight people have two years on the job and then a couple, one has less than that.
Is it unusual to have a firefighter on for thirty-five years?
Yes, that would be Jeff Warner, and he started when he was, I think, eighteen or nineteen years old. Which is very hard now, if we're hiring paramedics, it's just, you don't get out of school, go to paramedic class and get on when you're nineteen. Now, we've had, I think Andy Crooks may have been twenty, well, he's the exception to the rule. Uh, one of them, the next one there, the thirty-three year, that's Daryl Bailey, and he is retiring, he's the one that retired June first. And I'll just, I'll just keep moving along here. Uh, fire department call statistics, the two, twenty fifteen, four thousand eight hundred, or four thousand five hundred and eighty-five calls. And I just want to make a note, those are emergency calls, we don't count going out to put in smoke detectors, going to schools to do public education, those are only either nine-one-one calls where we have to go right away or a hospital calling for a transfer or something like, they're an actual, actual calls. Uh, twenty fourteen, we had, uh, four thousand two hundred and one, uh, just did a little comparison there on the, the difference. A lot of them were EMS, we had a lot, quite a few more EMS calls last year.
So you got three to four special calls, oh, you're going to have a few of those, huh?
Yeah, well, I'm not sure, I didn't look them up to see what they were exactly. But, but the next one, and I mentioned in the very, the opening page where, you know, it had the little, uh, letter to the city council. Uh, but I went back to nineteen ninety-seven, basically because that's the year I started the job and that's also the year that I could go back and find the, a good report of our calls, so. I needed to go one ahead Eric, want me to do it?
I got it.
Okay. So nineteen ninety-seven, we, we had two thousand five hundred and ninety-four calls, so we're, we're up about seventy-five percent over where we were back then. We had forty-nine people on the fire department, today we have forty-four, soon to be forty-two. Uh, to kind of see the difference in the calls there, we're at, looks like about sixteen hundred of the, the differences EMS calls. And I'll, and I'll talk about that on the next slide here, why that is. So why the big increase, well, population geographic areas covered by the Burlington Fire Department is growing. So obviously we added in the quad townships for fire coverage a few years ago. Uh, we've taken on Illinois Gulfport as far as nine-one-one, then we, all of Henderson County for tiering for ambulance. Uh, we've had increased calls for mutual aid. I'll show you in a little bit on a graph, we had forty calls where we went somewhere else last year for mutual aid, either over into Illinois for a fire call, not, not counting EMS, just for fire. Went to West Burlington, went to Danville, Minneapolis, Weaver, we go all over for mutual aid, but we added forty calls. You go back to two thousand and four, I think there was one or two calls from mutual aid, we just didn't get called outside the city limits. So that's one reason, it's only, only forty the calls difference. Uh, here's the biggest reason, population groups that use public services are growing. So the elderly population sixty-five and over, that group of people, and also residents living in poverty. There are two groups that use public services a lot. So from two thousand to twenty fourteen, you can see our population over sixty-five went from about seventeen percent to over twenty-six percent of our population, especially EMS wise, that makes a huge difference. And I don't, and that's, that population is projected to keep growing in the near future. Uh, residents living in poverty, that, that number's jumped a lot too, but six percent from two thousand to twenty fourteen. And these, these numbers are all, you could go to the US Census Department and that's, that's where I took the numbers from. I used five-two-six-on-one as a whole, so you get, actually get some of the, the county addresses in there as well. But generally, uh, that's, that's a pretty fair, uh, picture of what, of what we have. So with that said, you know, I don't know that any one of those two groups is going to go down a whole lot in the near future, so I would say our calls are going to continue to be run, to go up. I just have a few, uh, graphs here, mutual aid departments, this is either received, so these are calls where we asked for mutual aid or calls where we, uh, responded for mutual aid, so. All, all told, there was, uh, ninety, fifty times we asked for mutual aid, forty times we went out and gave some, another department mutual aid. So obviously, West Burlington is the biggest participant in mutual aid. Gladstone, a lot of those would be, uh, car accidents, there are a few maybe brush fires in there, but a lot of times we'll get called over there to do extrication or something on a car accident. Inspections by type for twenty fifteen, does that, I totally skipped over one page, didn't I? Inspections by type for twenty fifteen, I did those by percent. Liquor licenses is the biggest inspection that, that Mark goes out and performs. So all the bars, anywhere that sells alcohol has to have a, an annual liquor inspection. Uh, daycare's permit required, are a lot of, uh, automotive places, or places that are doing, uh, painting, if they're doing spraying, dipping, that kind of thing, they're required to have a permit. Uh, those are also a lot of his, uh, inspections. And then the violations, seventeen times he has to go back out and re-inspect, those are ones that he doesn't charge for. You know, you go there and you say, you know, your smoke detector doesn't have a battery or whatever, they fix it, he comes back, verifies it, uh, it's done. The second and third are the ones where, you know, I told you once, I came out, I checked, you still didn't fix it, and I have to go back. And we actually do have a fee for those inspections, uh, built in. If I could, I'm afraid to go back, but. Can you click me back to the response areas in twenty fifteen? Alright, so I just wanted to show that to say, you know, our calls, only seventy-two percent of our calls are actually in the city of Burlington, whether it's fire or EMS, the other twenty-eight percent of the time, we're going somewhere else. Uh, West Burlington again is the biggest area, the rural townships, Danville, and other would be, most, all of that is Illinois. Some of that, there's a couple of calls maybe to Minneapolis or, uh, down south to town to, uh, Weaver, Denmark, but th- those are not very often. And we've already, we talked about this in the, uh, the budget, but I just thought that was a, quite an increase from the year before, so I included that our ambulance billing, what we billed that year and brought in that year was, uh, just over one million. And then there's some other past due payments that came in, the, on the bad debt recovery, sixty-six thousand, and then the CTAA paid us sixty-one thousand on further contract. Uh, it's clicking right through now. NFPA seventeen-ten report, that's the standard that we go by as far as how many people should be at a structure fire, how fast you should get there, uh, talks about EMS calls and what kind of people and how, how soon they should be there as well, so. Turnout time is the time it takes us from when dispatch rings our bell to when we're in the vehicle going in route. So the standard for a fire is eighty seconds. Um, we're averaging about ninety-one seconds and part of that is if it's at night, it takes a little bit longer for the people to get down there and get dressed and get on the truck, that's, they're putting on their turnout gear for that time.
Don't, I mean, it, for, for the size that we've got and the area that we cover, uh, don't you think that's, that's.
Well, that turnout time doesn't have anything to do with distance, all that, distance from your, from the kitchen to the truck, that's all that's measuring. Yeah, so that is one thing downtown, especially, it's such a big station, you know, getting from where you're at, getting into the proper gear and getting out the door. That's a pretty good time, I can't figure out how to make the data show the percentage of time that we're under eighty seconds for this particular piece here. Uh, first do engine company, so the first, uh, group that's on scene needs to be there in five minutes or less, including the turnout time. So take the ninety-one seconds and then the drive time, you should be there in five minutes or less. We're doing that forty-five percent of the time. And a lot of that is there are areas in town, we just can't get there, I mean, there's just no possible way, anything. A lot of it off of Sunnyside or out in Lenox Park, uh, those, those places just aren't, just can't do it. Uh, the remainder of the first alarm should be there in nine minutes or less. Uh, that would be the second station, uh, also would include West Burlington on automatic aid, so. Seventy-four percent of the time we get the second station there, they're not that far apart within the nine minutes, so we're doing it seventy-four percent of the time. Uh, total number on the scene, it depends on what kind of, for a regular house fire, you're talking, you need about, you need fifteen people per NFPA on scene, if you're doing high rises, then you need seventeen or eighteen. Uh, but going with the fifteen people on scene, we're averaging eleven, so we're not meeting that all the time. Part of that is, we've got other calls going on where we just don't have the people to come to the scene. We call people in off duty, but a lot of times they, by the time they get there, we've got pretty much the situation under control and they're going to the stations to, to man a, a second out ambulance or a, a fire truck in case we get another call, which happens a lot when we're out on a fire scene. Uh, ambulance arrival time, again, uh, five minutes or less, um, we're averaging five minutes and thirty seconds, so we're just barely over that, and that also includes the, uh, turnout time. One caveat on that is that's emergency and non-emergency ambulance calls, since we started doing EMD at dispatch, we do get what's called priority two calls, so they call us out to an address and we don't go there with lights and sirens on. So that does take you a little longer, we still go, you know, we still go out of the building just as fast. They still drop whatever they're doing, go out and get in the ambulance and go to the call, but they just don't. But they just don't use the lights and sirens. So, uh, we get quite a few of those a day, and those do affect your overall time. I'm hoping with the new software system we're using, we can divide out the non-emergency calls. So, we get a better idea of what our time actually is. All right. Moving on to, uh, challenges before I finish this off. But, uh, I've already talked about increased calls with fewer personnel. So, really how that affects us is our training. Uh, we have less time for training, and it's very rare that you would hold the class and not be interrupted. So, pretty much anytime you hold a class, you either gotta hold the class twice, so you can maybe do half the shift now and half the shift later. Or the ambulance crews are, are in and out a lot. So, they, they miss out on a lot of training. Um, increased overtime. With that, a lot of that has to do with, uh, kind of goes on, later on down, we'll talk about greater stress on crews. But obviously, the more calls you go on, it's not just the one call where you lift somebody really heavy. It's the lifting the cot over and over and over again. Eventually gets you, and we do have, uh, get quite a few injuries from that. Uh, more reliance on mutual aid. I already talked about that. We, we do way more mutual aid for and given than we've ever done in our history. Uh, greater likelihood of simultaneous calls. And pretty much all our calls at a minimum, the calls I'm reporting, it takes two people. There's no call that takes less than two. So, an EMS call at the minimum, you're talking to sometimes four, sometimes five. Uh, fire calls, you know, if it's an actual fire, other than a car fire, it's taking all the personnel that are on duty. Um, greater stress on crews physically and mentally, obviously, that, you know, the more calls you get, the, the more kind of stuff you're seeing. Uh, the more wear and tear on your body, uh, that they're facing. A lack of rest. I know there's this, sometimes there's this perception that, oh, they're just, everybody's taking a nap. Well, I can tell you, they are not taking naps. But they do need, they do need rest. They do need downtime during the day to recover from the calls, and there's not a lot of that happening. Greater wear and tear on equipment, especially our engines. Our ambulances run a good rotation schedule. We're, we're doing pretty good. But the engines, hopefully, we get this one next week, and then I think it's three years out, we get our next one. But, had one breakdown again today. It's about a twenty-year-old engine. It's real, it's ready for a back row and not to be run out of the station every day. But we just have anything to replace it with at the minute. A lack of a dedicated EMS coordinator and EMS officer. Uh, back in twenty-ten, we had, we had two deputy chiefs. And we had decided one was gonna be dedicated solely to EMS, uh, duties. However, that, that's when we lost the deputy chief. So, that never actually happened. But we do now, we have a battalion chief that kind of oversees the training of EMS. However, he's, he's also running his own shift. So, he is overwhelmed with EMS, and we've kind of divided it out to where myself, the deputy chief, uh, Dana, we've all kind of taken on some of these duty, whether it's continuous, uh, quality improvement or audits. Something I, Donnie and I started doing a couple of months ago. So, we read all the EMS reports that need read, go through, give the guys feedback on their treatment, on their reports. Training, it's really hard for the battalion chief, it's Eric Bolinger, to, to line up all the training, 'cause he's, he works a twenty-four hour shift. So, he doesn't see the other two shifts. So, he's always trying to coordinate, find instructors on the other shifts. We need to have a HIPAA compliance officer supply required. Skills maintenance requires somebody to oversee that. Certification tracking. Iowa is okay. Illinois is a nightmare keeping track of our certifications. All of our people are dual certified Iowa and Illinois. Kind of talk about inconsistencies with training. We don't have a, an instructor. Before, we had the one deputy chief that, that's kind of what he did. He taught the same class, three shifts in a row. Well, now, we don't have that. We're, different people are having to teach the classes. Uh, same with difficulty lining up instructors. Uh, lack of a consistent EMS contact for outside agency. So, we get called to put on a class, or somebody has a question about something with EMS. We try to give it to Battalion Chief Bolinger. However, like I said, he works a twenty-four hour shift. So, he's only there about every third day. Um, and difficult to keep him up, keeping up on advances, uh, in technology and skills without somebody dedicated to being the EMS person. And here's something that's been on our radar. For ISO or NFPA, you need to do so many hours of live fire training. And fire training in a fire training facility of some kind, about twelve hours a year, day and night training. Well, the only facility nearby is down in Fort Madison, which for us, you can't do that on duty. You'd have to pay people overtime to come in and go down there. West Burlington, it's got a start. Out by the hospital, they've built a small pad where they have a training prop, but they don't have a facility. They don't have a, a tower or anything to do live, live fire training. So, uh, that's something that, for, for ISO and for internal training, that we really need to, to look at. So, looking ahead to twenty sixteen, uh, we're like halfway through the year. So, some of the stuff we're already working on. But we just implemented this last week, and that's a change in our EMS software and hardware. We're using the iPads for EMS reporting. It's a huge adjustment for our crews, and it's something I've been working on. And Donnie and Mark, we're all trying to get this going. But, uh, we changed as of May first to a new, new software for EMS. Um, still working on it. I've continued to look for ways to improve our ISO score. So, whether it's in equipment, uh, training, making sure the training that we do is recorded, that's a big thing, 'cause we, we do training that sometimes doesn't get recorded. So, I'm big on keeping it recorded. Our, in our new engine, we made sure it was, uh, built to NFPA. I can't remember what it is, nineteen, nineteen oh one standard. Uh, there were some things that, that they sent us back our, our records, say, okay, these are the ways it's not gonna meet nineteen oh one, and it's up to you to do it, like put the ladders on it, the hose, uh, SCBA. Some of the equipment, we're just taking from our old engine, putting on the new one. But other than that, it's built to, to meet the standard. Uh, we're gonna continue to apply for grants. We just wrote, uh, the Safer Grant, uh, two different AFG grants are in. Look for those wherever we can. Explore and utilize new technologies. Again, using the iPads, a lot of things are moving to the, moving to web-based, which is great internally. We're, you know, stuff updates, software updates. Uh, we don't have to rely so much on city IT staff to come. And every time there's a new update for something, I have to have them come down, update each computer. It's all up, uh, what do you call, out in the cloud or whatever. So, our EMS, fire, billing, all that now is, is in the, is in the cloud. So, it just updates itself automatically, which has been awesome. Uh, continue to advance our training program, uh, finalize recruit training process. So, we were lucky with the last new person. Like I said, he was a veteran. He didn't take a whole lot of training. But we've been, we have a year-long probationary process where we work them through a book. The person we hired just before Jared, our last one, we, we brought him in and we did a forty-hour training, or, uh, take that back, four weeks of forty-hour weeks. So, we brought him in for about a month and tried to get most of his probationary training done. So, then we had the rest of the time to evaluate this person, to make sure they were up to snuff. So, we're, we're working on that, trying to get that finalized. So, from now on, when we hire a new person, this is your recruit training. This is how it's set up. You come in, you work either two weeks for an experienced person or, or four for somebody that's, that's fresh. So, and again, a, a lot of these aren't new. This is stuff we, we always do. But focus on prevention, and that, prevention is so hard to measure. I mean, you don't know what you prevented, whether it's through education or, uh, updating the, the building codes. You think maybe you might have prevented a fire, but you really don't know. Sometimes with a smoke detector, somebody might call and say, hey, you know, it went off when I was burning food on the stove or whatever. But normally, you, a lot of the prevention stuff, you don't know. But we're always looking into that. Continue with the public education, smoke alarm installations, uh, anything that we can do to help out. I think that's the end of it. Have we got any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just want to say, uh, uh, I sure appreciate the job you guys are doing. And, uh, you, you know how I feel about you, man. I, I, I pat you on the back every time I get a chance. I think we got a great, uh, uh, fire chief. And, uh, we got a good, we got a good staff down there. So, hopefully, uh, you know, we can, well, as we move forward down the road, that we'll be able to, uh, uh, help you with some of those problems that, that are gonna be, uh, facing you guys in the future. But good job. I, I really have to say that I really, I, I, I think, I think we're really, really blessed at the, the fire department that we have.
Thank you. I kind of read through there, and I thought I kind of ended on a bummer there, but I don't want it to seem that way, 'cause it, I think things are moving in the right direction. I got a great, I mean, I can't be more happy with my administrative staff and the, the people that we've been hiring. Just, everybody in general has been really good to work with. And I think we're making a lot of progress. So, always room for improvement. I mean, that's never gonna end. We can, you could give us all the money in the world, and we would still, there'd be something that we needed to work on. That's just how that is. So.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Uh, does anybody have any issue with the appointment, uh, Phoebe Eric for, uh, uh, Loweren Housing? Anybody have an issue with that? Okay. Good. Um, I brought back, I brought everybody back something from my trip. Uh, Mr. Teslin, do you have anything you want to say before we? Would you like to show everybody your gift? I brought you back something special.
Some peanuts.
Peanuts from the flight?
The bridge, the bridge runs this Saturday at eight. I encourage everyone, anyone to sign up that wants to, can be a fun run, walk, the five K or more competitive run, five and ten K. So, encourage people to sign up for it while they still can.
Eat those peanuts before you run, and you'll win. Council, councilwoman?
Um, let's see. This Saturday is a fundraiser at Roters for, um, the Special Olympics. I just encourage anyone to come out.
What are you gonna be doing there?
I will get pied in the face. Should be a good time.
Yes.
So, stop on out and make an appearance. That's it. Thank you.
Councilman? Okay. Um, I just want to, uh, just briefly, want, want to thank, uh, uh, the city of Atlanta, uh, Baton Rouge, Louisiana, Natchez, Mississippi. They were just, uh, fantastic, especially Mississippi. They're wonderful hosts. Uh, we got a chance to travel down for the, uh, to, uh, to receive our, the award, uh, for the area. It was, uh, just a fantastic trip. And I, I could, I could sit here for, uh, forty-five minutes to an hour telling you about all the fantastic things that, that, uh, we got to experience that happened on the trip. But I won't do that so that nobody gets mad at me. But feel free to talk to Dave Toyer or to Jason Hutchinson or to, uh, to Hans as well, um, Trousel. And, uh, but it was just a fantastic trip. So, uh, glad we got a chance to do that. Also, uh, just, um, we were there at the day of prayer. Myself and Mayor Pro Tem were there to, uh, to support that, and that, I thought, uh, turned out really well. And, uh, um, I just want to say thank you. You're always available for stuff like that. Uh, it goes without saying. And, and then also, I just want to thank, uh, John Billups, uh, for the invitation. He had to go through the entire phone book till he got to the M's. God bless him. And, uh, but, uh, I got a chance to, to speak for the, uh, for the teacher of the year. And that was a great, it was a fantastic program. A lot of teachers that I, that I recognize and remember from school. And, uh, uh, it was just a fantastic event. So, it was good to be a part of that as well. And I just want to say, I'm just excited. We, uh, we're moving forward. People say, you know, I, I've heard this so many times, you know, Burlington never gets anything done. You know, they start stuff, they don't finish it, or they're not gonna, you know, they're not gonna make a commitment to do anything. They've been kicking this down the road. Well, now, we're not kicking the can anymore. And, and I'm, I, I really feel good about that. We, we, we've, uh, the Burlington Crossing, it's, it's a done deal. They're gonna start turning dirt. Uh, the police department, they're getting out of that building that's on a gangster lane, and that we ought to be ashamed of ourselves. I'm, I'm so grateful for that, that, that we're getting out of there. And that took a lot of hard work. Um, it took, uh, the citizens coming together and, and recognizing how important it was. So, uh, I'll, man, I'll, I'll be talking all night. So, I'll get, I'll be, I'll be done. I'll call it done. And I'm just glad to see, I'm also glad to see, uh, Bob made it back from Texas. Uh, we missed him while he was gone. Mayor Pro Tem?
I guess, um, I think it was about the first council meeting I attended after I got elected, I was sitting right there. And they came in and told us that, that the people that were going to redevelop that man area had pulled out. And, uh, my comment was, don't worry, folks, it'll be okay. And so.
He did, he did lie. He did lie to you.
Eight years later, it's gonna be okay. And I have not changed what I've thought since that day. So, there you go.
There you go. Well said.
That's good news.
Councilman Fleming?
I enjoyed my trip to Houston. I found some interesting things down there. Some of you heard this. They don't have zoning down there in that huge city. For instance, I saw a pretty good-sized area residential there. No sidewalks. Kind of interesting. Uh, other than that, uh, we did a lot of driving, but I'm glad to be home. I missed the city council tremendously, but I, I'll get over it.
We know you will.
I did have a, I should say this. So, I did have a citizen come to my house Saturday on this smoke thing from fires in the backyard, you know. And we all know about this. He's talked to the chief, I know, and he's talked to.
Yes.
I really feel bad for the guy. I mean, he's, I, I don't have a solution, you know. The only thing I did think we could look at someday is look at the ordinance. For instance, says you can have a fire up to one AM in the morning. Well, maybe that's slower than, I don't know. I mean, I'm not into that.
I, I hear where you're coming from, though, and I, yeah, I, I hear you there.
And otherwise, things are looking good in Burlington. I'm very proud of my son, that chamber flyer. I thought that was well done.
He's a good kid. He takes after his mother.
Mayor is out of order, I move that we adjourn.
After we hear from Steph. You got any thoughts?
I don't have any.
Good. I mean, oh.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Oh, uh, who's, who wants to do the KBR? Who wants to do the radio show? Everybody's dying to spend time with Rob. I'll, I'll see you, Rob. Who?
Well, you. I wanted to talk about this.
Okay. I'll, I'll be there, Rob. I'll find somebody else.
Do you want me to go?
It'll be me and Twan. How about that?
What is that? Wednesday?
That's right, on Wednesday.
At nine o'clock.
There we go.
Yeah. Well, you know.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.